Head and call the June seventeenth meeting of the New Market Town Council to order. And Mr. Town Manager, if we could start with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Chair of the Town Council has, due to the COVID nineteen coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor's News Emergency Order Number Twelve, pursuant to Executive Order twenty twenty dash four, has determined that the Town Council is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are a public, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We utilize Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the Zoom platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, one six four six five five eight eight six five six, with the access code nine one one seven zero two five seven two seven. B, oh, or by clicking on the following web address, www-newmarketnh.gov, where it's also being streamed live on the town website and channel thirteen locally. B, providing the public notice of necessary information for accessing the meeting. We have previously given notice to the public on how to access the meeting using Zoom. And instructions are provided on the town and New Markets website. We have provided a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there's problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call six oh three six five nine three six one seven, extension one three two one. And would be adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access it. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, we'll adjourn the meeting, have it rescheduled at a specific time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. With that, we'll begin by taking roll call attendance. Would each member state that they're here? And also please state whether there's anyone in the room with them during the meeting, which is required by the right to know law. So start with Counsel Finch.
Present and alone.
Counsel Sanders.
Present and alone.
Counsel Dumont.
Present and alone.
Counsel Kuiper.
Present and alone.
Counsel Matthews.
Present and alone.
Counsel Burns.
Present and alone.
Counsel Weinstein.
Present and alone.
Okay, I turn it back over to you.
Great. So the first item on our agenda as always is public comment, and I'm not seeing any members of the public. So we will move on from that to the acceptance of minutes. And so the first is the June third twenty twenty non-public meeting minutes. So I'd accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the June third twenty twenty non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
If there are any questions or concerns, we would have to go into non-public to discuss those, but I'm not seeing any. So if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And the next item is for the June third twenty twenty regular meeting minutes. And I would accept a motion to approve those.
I will make a motion to approve the June third twenty twenty regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I am not seeing any hands, so if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Madam Chair.
Yes.
This would be a good time to seal the minutes of the non-public session.
Thank you very much. Yes, I would accept a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public session from earlier this evening.
I'll make a motion to seal the non-public minutes from this evening.
Second.
Counsel Matthews.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that's been necessary. I mean, in our non-public, really hasn't been, I think the minutes are in that they probably could be shared publicly. They're not meeting the three criteria.
As the employee that's involved, I don't want them shared. I have that right.
I think it depends on how the minutes are taken, right?
No, if it does anything to do with the evaluation of an employee, the employee has the right to request that that not be shared.
Okay.
It still has, it has to do with the reputation of the employee, which is me.
Right, right. I think that's, it's that close adverse adverse effect, right?
You evaluated me, there's some, could be construed as adverse material in there.
If that shows up in the minute, that's what I was, all I was trying to say is that.
Traditionally, I mean, I've never seen an employee's evaluation be, the minutes of those meetings be public unless the employee requested it. I mean, you're right, there's nothing sinister in there, but it just, it's the right of the employee.
I'm not seeing any other hands, so if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. And I'm trying to make you the co-host, I didn't realize that.
Oh. I think, oh, can I see the hands if I'm not the co-host?
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, I can't.
And actually, I cannot do that because I'm only co-host, I'm not the host. The individual downstairs will have to do that. So we will have to raise a hand for now.
Awesome. Well, let's move on to the Town Manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'm going to give an update, as I have been recently, on the COVID nineteen response. The first item is, I'm pleased to announce that we will be hosting summer recreation program. It will be very different from what we have done in the past, but we are holding one. Starting July sixth and running through August fourteenth, we'll be running a very modified program. We're still doing a small groups of ten or less, including one or two counselors. Some of the changes for the campers, and this is a long list, but I think that's good for the public to hear what we're doing, will be that masks will be required when they cannot maintain social distance due to activity that are involved in, or they're not abiding by the six-foot distant, uh, social distance guidelines. Each program we offer will be divided into groups that consist of, again, no more than ten people per total group, including children and staff. This will help limit the COVID nineteen transmission if someone is found to be infected. The most part will be keeping two to eight or one to nine ratio at all times. For each of our programs, we'll be keeping the same groups of staff and campers together throughout the program session. Once registered into a program, we'll not move children between groups during the same week. Staff will also not float between groups unless necessary for an activity instruction where one person teaches multiple camp groups. It can be maintained by social distancing and not become part of ten group and part of that ten-person dynamic. Groups will be assigned to different home base rooms in the community center, which will stay in for the duration of the camp program. This is in case of inclement weather. Each group will use the same e-gresses to enter and exit the building. These doorways will also be used where drop off and pickup will take place. Each group will also be signed up a specific bathroom. Campers of the same group will use the same bathroom for the duration of the camp, unless there's an emergency when they're, or when they need, uh, when they need to use a restroom. To avoid overlapping groups in one area of activity, detailed schedules will be created to allow enough time for groups to move between activities without interacting with other groups. Different groups may use the same large outdoor spaces, but groups will be kept separate and not allowed to interact. We'll keep campers outside as much as possible. For indoor activities, all groups will have their own space and room and be separated and not interact. It will space seating and activities so children at least six feet apart whenever possible. The Governor issued his safer-at-home advisory in the stay-at-home orders has been lifted, and a part of that, he did lift the number of people that can be in a group. So there is no longer a ten-person maximum. However, we felt at this time that this is probably the best way to handle it with the number of children. You don't want a lot of interaction, so we want to make sure that we can ensure that safety. The Governor also, though, last week, I know that the last meeting, I went over the guidelines for amateur sports and for the baseball and softball leagues that are usually held in town, that he went to phase two on those programs, and they are allowed to play games now. However, a lot of those rules are still in place, and no games can be played between, they only can be played between individuals from Vermont, Maine, and New Hampshire. So Massachusetts cannot play sports in New Hampshire at this point in time. The next item is, it's our intention to reopen Town Hall to very limited foot traffic on June twenty ninth, two thousand twenty. We are still encouraging residents to use online services for the time being, but we understand there are some things that can only be done in person. To accommodate reopening the building, the building and following advice from emergency management team and our insurance carriers, we developed some standing operating procedures, which will be in effect until further notice. These practices are based on public health guidelines and are designed to keep both our employees and the public safe. Please note that certain departments may need to adapt procedures specific to their facilities and services. We will learn, adjust, and adapt as we move forward and ask for your help and patience during the time. So here are some of the things that will be in place for Town Hall. Town Hall is continuously sanitized. We have a, for the council's knowledge, we have a sanitizer foam, looks like almost like a steam gun, that they walk around with sanitizer. You can tell you come in every morning, it's cut, we have a nice little film on everything with the sanitizer. But we'll continue to do that, as well as being cleaned every evening. We do have hand sanitizer and mask stations throughout the building, and members of the public are asked to use hand sanitizer before entering a department. Plexiglas guards have been installed at all customer service counters. Prior to reporting back to work, employees will let supervisors know if they need a cloth, cloth mask. A cloth mask will be provided to employees that need them. When possible, workstations for employees will be separated by at least six feet. Whenever needed, six feet demarcations will be added to areas where people often wait for service. For that, what we're looking at right now is people will be queuing up outside. So we'll probably be putting the six foot marks painted on the asphalt on the side of the, on the side of the building. To extent, the extent possible, will remain one public entrance to Town Hall, which will be the Saint Mary's side of the building, where masks and hand sanitizer will be available to the public. The beach street entrance shall be reserved and demarcated for employee and emergency use only. All visitors to Town Hall must wear masks. An employee must don a mask anytime they're unable to maintain a six-foot distance between them and a coworker and/or someone from the public. Care should be taken when putting masks on and taking them off. For examples, hands should be washed and disinfected prior to putting a mask on and taking one off. While in office with closed doors or working alone or a distance from other staff, masks can be removed. Masks must be worn in hallways and common areas when we're open to the public. Care should be taken to keep your mask clean and uncontaminated unless it's necessary for face-to-face contact when responding to an inquiry from the public. As staff will be still responding by telephone or email. We're afraid from communicating with the public or each other via text because the town is subject to the right to know law requests, and retrieving checks may require inspection of an employee's telephone. Unless it's necessary for face-to-face contact with coworkers, we're asking them to consider a phone call. We've actually implemented Microsoft Teams across the board for all department heads. And we've been using that, or email. Even if our offices or workspace are next to each other, we still want to maintain that distance. If an in-person conversation occurs, try to remain at the door if applicable, or maintain a six-foot distance whenever possible. If not possible, they must wear a mask. For example, if you're picking up mail from another person or documents in the clerk's office space, dropping off items on an individual's desk, et cetera. We're going to continue electronic meetings until, until further notice. Employees should avoid congregant in any area of all facilities unless social distancing can be maintained. Did you remember this means six feet all around? Staff should stagger breaks and maintain social distance at six feet when possible. Breaks should be taken separately. Employees should continue to encourage and help the public to use online resources to the maximum extent. And to, and to the extent possible, work to minimize the town time spent conducting in-person transactions with the public and each other. For example, keep non-taskable conversations so minimal. As I said, while the governor's stay-at-home order has been lifted, we are still allowed to meet remotely. The, this afternoon, I sent an email out to the chairs of various boards. The Chair of the Council received it, and I'm going to read it to the council at this point in time. Because I've been receiving a number of questions as to when can we hold meetings as a board in person again? At this time, I cannot determine this date and time. While stay-at-home order is no longer in place, Governor's News Emergency Order Number Twelve is still in effect. That allows municipal boards to meet remotely during the state of emergency. It was indicated from the Attorney General's Office today that this will stay in place for the duration of the state of emergency. Again, that can always change, but that's what the Attorney General's Office indicated to us today on phone call. While we can legally meet in purpose in person, from my measurements, Town Hall cannot ensure the proper, proper social distancing for all boards, committees, and the council at this time. Council chambers just isn't an option. We cannot get enough seats in the room. I've looked at the auditorium. I've actually set it up today, seven councils and town manager can attend. All other staff, public, et cetera, would have to sit in chairs. Having the six, the chairs six feet apart from each other, which all around, allows for twelve additional chairs in the room. And remember, we cannot deny access to a public meeting if it's open to the public. The AG's office and New Hampshire Municipal Association stated that if the board chooses to meet, the public must be allowed in the room. While I believe we could have an overflow room for those willing, if a member of the public demands to be in the physical room, they must be allowed. I confirmed that with the New Hampshire Municipal Association Legal Council today. And also for the overflow, I'd use council chambers, and that can only hold six people, and they'd watch it on TV. Also, while we require the public to wear a mask, if they claim to have medical issues, they would not have to. So that would be another issue. So, for example, the municipal budget committee just could not meet anywhere in this facility. We just don't have the room. Well, I know the council does not have many visitors or staff attending. I could not ensure that for a public hearing or other type meeting that requires public participation, that all of a sudden, a large number of people decide to show up. We'd have to cancel the meeting immediately because we just could not hold the people. And so at this time, I would suggest that we continue with remote public meetings as much as possible. Hopefully later in the summer, we'll have more guidance. And, you know, we are going on a somewhat of a summer break, and it would allow us to determine whether things change in the next, in the upcoming weeks. And I see Counselor Burns has her hand up.
Yes, I think I probably know the answer to the question, but I just want to ask it. Would it allow you to, if we, if there were to be meetings at Town Hall, would the rules allow it to also be zoomed? The public could attend via Zoom as well? No?
No, they still have to, you still have to allow them in the building, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
What, what some communities are doing is the Chair of the Council or, or Select Board will go to Town Hall, call them in to order, and staff will be in the council chambers. RSA ninety-one A, prior to the emergency order, allows that in emergency situations, you can participate. A quorum does not need to be present, but, you know, so you can participate electronically. The Chair can make that determination. So the rest of the council could be done remotely. The Chair would sit here, and the staff would sit here, and then the public would have to be allowed it. That is one option, but you, the council could not, we could not fit everybody in one room. The council probably could, but other boards and commissions, we definitely could not. I mean, my, my thought was, for example, the planning board. One, you have applicants, you have a butters, you have a public hearing, you have, you know, the members themselves, and then the staffs, their engineers, their attorneys. Twelve, you get the twelve real quick when it comes to the seats in the audience. So I just, at this point in time, I just can't see it. And like I said, municipal budget committee, and the schools, I know the school has, like, for every meeting, they tend to have like half the staff there. So there goes half the seats. So I just, I, that's why I wanted to send that email out today. Because there are some communities that are looking at it and trying to reopen. It's just our facilities aren't big enough, right? Which is odd to say when you have an auditorium, but with the net, the size of the council and the size of our commissions, it's just, we don't have the room. And just as I'm, to go back to my report, as I mentioned, the governor's stay-at-home order has been lifted and replaced with the safer home. We're still reviewing all of our plans how we can safely start to open more items under these guidelines. I've talked to other municipalities, maybe tend to allow an outside seating for the restaurants for the remainder, at least the summer is over. The reasoning is, if they're only at fifty percent in our county, then we, we want to make sure they can try to make up their money some way, and that would be allowing the additional outside seating. And actually, I've heard a lot of people just like it, so it's not a negative. So we're going to continue that for now, and I'd actually want to look at those guidelines at some time in the future. Some of the things that we also are looking at, and we are looking at the reopening of playground equipment. This is the stuff we're really working with our insurance carrier more than anything. And today I also issued an emergency order, and that relates to travel since it's vacation time for all town employees. That if anybody travels internationally by cruise ship, which I don't think they're already, or domestically within the United States, outside of New Hampshire, Vermont, or Maine on public transportation, those employees, when they return to work, will have to quarantine for fourteen days on their own, using their own earned time. These are guidelines set forth by the CDC and the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. We just can't, we're, we know that the remainder of the country, we're, you know, I, right now, our numbers are going down, but the number, the rest of the country is still a hot zone, and those are really areas that we need to make sure. And this is in line with other municipalities, the state and the other states in our area. So again, the other, there are two options are, one, they can quarantine at home for fourteen days if they're, or if they're able to, we'll let them work remotely for fourteen days. But we have to, you cannot have anybody traveling on train, plane, bus, or public transportation until we're past this. This, this has been communicated to all the employees, there should have been an email that went out this afternoon if everything weren't as planned. But that's where we are. We just got that guidance at the end of last week as well. So other items on my report. The other big item that we have been dealing with, which I'm going to read, this is going to be, again, a lot of reading, but I think it's important to get this out there, is that a lot of issue, a lot of questions have been coming up about the police tactics, and the police, the tactics that our police department uses. And we understand the concerns that people have, and also regarding the policies that the, the police department has. We cannot share all the policies with the public. Really, because in accordance with RSA ninety-one eight, colon, five, section six, but we are going to address, we did, have been addressing, and we post these on the town website, the most common topics we received, and we're going to share excerpts of the policies. They're commonly something eight, and I can't remember off the top of my head all of a sudden. But here are the questions that we're getting about the areas. One, do we ban chokeholds and strangleholds? Our police policy specifically states the use of net restraints, chokehold, or other weaponless control techniques is prohibited unless the use of deadly force is authorized. Two, do we require de-escalation? Our police policy specifically states officers shall, shall use advisements, warnings, and verbal persuasion when possible before resorting to force. Force shall be de-escalated immediately as resistance decreases. When feasible, based on the circumstances, officers will use disengagement, air containment, surveillance, waiting on subjects, summoning reinforcements, and/or calling in specialized units in order to reduce the need for force and increase officer and civilian safety. And four, officers shall allow individuals time to submit to arrest before force is used whenever possible. Three, do we require warning before shooting? Our police policy specifically states, when tactically feasible, an officer will identify themselves as a police officer and issue verbal commands and warnings prior to the use of force. When feasible, an officer will allow the subject not to comply, comply with the officer's verbal commands. A verbal warning is not required in circumstances where the officer has to make a split-second decision if the officer reasonably believes that issuing the warning would place the safety of the officer or others in jeopardy. Warning shots are prohibited. Officers are prohibited from discharging firearms as a means of warning or frightening a person. Do we exhaust all the terms before shooting? This goes along with our officers being trained in force continuum. We've established, and our officers are trained to recognize and utilize all four forms of force continuum, beginning with the officer presence, verbal command, de-escalation techniques, soft-hand techniques, hard-hand techniques, intermediate weapons such as pepper sprays, taser, baton, and lastly, deadly force. Do we have to intervene? Our police policy specifically states officers who use excessive and unjustified force degrade the confidence of the community they serve, undermine the legitimacy of a police officer's authority, and hinder the department's ability to provide effective law enforcement services to the community. If an officer observes or witnesses excessive unjustified unreasonable use of force, the officer shall immediately intervene to stop excessive unjustified or unreasonable use of force, and shall also report such force to their immediate supervisor as soon as possible. Do we ban shooting at moving vehicles? Our police policy specifically states officers are prohibited from discharging their firearms at or from a moving motorcycle or bicycle collectively, motor, moving vehicle unless the officer reasonably believes the force is necessary to fend the officer or third person from use or, from the use or imminent use of deadly force. For the purposes of this policy, officers will not discharge their firearms in a moving vehicle except under extreme circumstances. Such discharges will be rigorously scrutinized. Officers shall, as a rule, avoid tactics that could place them in a position where a moving vehicle could be used against them. When confronted with an oncoming motor vehicle, officers should attempt to move out of its path, and should generally avoid placing themselves in situations where the use of deadly force is more likely. Do we establish the use, the force use, use of force continuum? We have established, and our officers are trained to recognize and use, utilize all forms of force continuum, beginning with officers' presence, verbal commands, de-escalation techniques, soft-hand techniques, hard-hand techniques, intermediate weapons such as pepper spray, taser, baton, and lastly, deadly force. Do we require all force to be reported? Our policy specifically states the department shall establish and maintain a use-of-force reporting system that allows for the effective review and analysis of all incidents in which a sworn member of this agency uses any level of force and performance with their duties against any member of the public, whether on duty or off duty. The reporting system shall be designed to help identify trends, improving training and officer safety, and provide timely and accurate information to the department. Employees shall complete a departmental use of force report form whenever they use a level of force against a suspect above unresisted handcuffing. This includes the discharge of a firearm or any action that results in or as a result of an injury or death to another person. So those are a lot of the questions we've been getting about what the police department's policies are on those items. And we've just been really trying to get that information out to the public that we do follow those guidelines very closely and very seriously. So I just wanted to make sure we have that on the record. I see, Council Dumas has hand up.
Yeah, just a quick one. I appreciate you reading that, so you know, our citizens can understand what our, our police department's policies are and how they enter into situations. It seems very rare to me, but we know of any, or how often we're finding that Newmarket Police ever get to the point where they do have to discharge their weapons or they have to take that step beyond, you know, medium force. Because it doesn't seem like we have those issues in our community. I just wasn't sure if there's really much data out there to either support that one way or the other.
Um, you know, I, I would have to check, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I mean, I know it's, it's, you're right, it's a very rare situation. I mean, discharging a weapon is extremely rare. I don't, to the point where I don't know if it's happened since I've been on, in Newmarket, that kind of thing. But I, I can ask that from the police chief.
I just want to say that, first of all, there's a lot to unpack in your report this evening. So I know that I have some questions and if anybody else, just raise your hand as we go through some of these issues. So first with the, with the response from the chief, I just want to say how much I appreciate him being proactive in providing this information. I, I know that we mentioned it, I mentioned it at the last meeting when he was here and talked about the police's response, or his response to some of our community members. And I just appreciate him being so forthright and, and getting that, this information. Cause this is in response to that, you know, in case people don't know, that the eight can't wait movement. So again, you know, rather than kind of waiting and, and I guess rest, like it would be really easy for him to rest and say like, no, we don't have those issues in Newmarket. He's just been on top of it and it's been really great to see that, so. So there, I wanted to make sure that I commented on that. One of the things that I didn't see, maybe I missed it in the camping information, are they going to be taking temperatures?
Good question, I'm going to double check, I don't have that right in front of me.
Yeah.
I know they're going to be asking about that and I think they're going to be asking the parents too, but I'll double check.
I was just curious. And I'm not seeing any other hands, so I'm just going to kind of keep going there. I had a couple other, one around, around the, our COVID response. Has there been any talk about the governor lifting the state of emergency? Do you know, do you have any information about that?
There is, there is no talk at this time. Lifting a state of emergency also lifts emergency funding. So that's, I don't think there's any states that have lifted the emergency. They just lift certain orders at this point. Yeah, so to be honest, it's funny because we've been watching, we watched the, we get, while we have phone calls every, well, now we're down to two days a week. We used to get the information the same way everybody else does in the press conference. We didn't have them beforehand, which was frustrating. When the governor held this press conference at four o'clock on a Friday afternoon and we couldn't do anything over the weekend. We'd say some order was in place or lifted over the weekend. As you realize, that's been switched to two days a week as well, we meet on the other days. But yeah, now, right now, there's no, no move to remove the emergency order. Again, we, we don't know when any of the, the specific orders will be lifted either. That's why we, we were all watching for emergency order twelve. There was a lot of discussion about when that, when the groups of smaller than ten, larger than ten could get back together, whether or not the public meeting part would have been lifted. But the problem is you still need that six feet distance. The recommended six feet for social distancing, so it's just still not possible.
Counselor Matthews.
I'm going to put this down now, there we go. Steve, just one thing you had talked about was working from home. And have, have you thought about that policy going forward? You know, offering that more and more, I mean, from, I think there's a pandemic roadmap that came out and it said, you know, if you can work from home, you're the last, you know, keep working from home until we get through this ever. So I'm just wondering what, have you given any thoughts to that at all for employees?
Yeah, absolutely, there, there are some employees that due to family situations that we're definitely letting them continue to work at home. There are some that, you know, it, it just, when I say family, it could be anything from childcare to illness in the family, but we just, we want to make sure that we think that's fine and they can work at home. To be honest, if somebody doesn't feel safe, we'd say, you know what, you can work at home. If you have, if they're have some kind of health reason where they couldn't come in when the public comes in, that's fine. They can, you don't have an issue working at home. During the beginning of this, we had situation with certain departments just didn't, they, one, one parameter of the department just didn't work here. So we had a continuity of government situation. That was at the same point in time when I stopped meeting with the emergency management team in person. Because we didn't, if one of us went down with it, then they would all be contaminated as well and have to be up fourteen days. So we want to make sure that we'd always have it, be able to have somebody in town. Department head meetings are all done by teams now, when we have them. It's, it's different, it's, I'm finding it, getting a lot more information out of it. But yeah, we, we're just trying not to have people in the same room. But I have no, I, I'm very open for working at home. And in the future, I even have it that, okay, if somebody has like, some reason has to be home because somebody's fixing the boiler and they need to sit there. I don't have a problem if somebody has picked up their laptop and does the same work at home. I mean, I found that, so during this whole thing too, I would, because the number of Zoom meetings we'd have on Fridays, I was working at home on Fridays. Also found out I got a lot, when I was working at home on Fridays during those meetings. So it's, I don't have an issue with working at home at all.
Yeah, I think that's great, thank you.
Something that, I mean, we may want to consider, even if we did start meeting in public again. I think, you know, the idea that somebody could be exposed or, you know, know that they're exposed and then have to quarantine for two weeks could be prohibitive to participate in a, in a meeting. And so like having that hybrid, you know, some, some sort of a hybrid option for people. I think however, we can figure that out, if it's what you mentioned before with, you know, just having a, like the chair and the, and the town manager and a, a town, at town hall and then everyone else participate remotely. Having like some way for the public to interact and then, but also for people to be able to be safe and not feel like that they are, that they have to be present. It's going to be a fine, a, a, a hard line to walk for a long time.
I, I think one thing that we've been learning during this whole thing is the importance of our technology. You know, we, we knew that we had some, a lot of deficiencies and now we're, we're finding out that we had more than we thought. Coincidentally, I mean, like I said, I know I told the council about last year, we finished our continual, continuation of operations or, or of government plan. And, you know, pandemics were not in the book. It just wasn't. And, but even if we don't have a, I mean, knock on wood, have a pandemic for a while, we could have a hurricane, we could have an ice storm again, that we lose power or the floods that, you know, certain section of town is, there's not working. There's no reason why somebody just can't take their laptop and operate somewhere else. And that's what our plan says, and I know the finance director is beginning to work on, is reviewing all of our technology. And as I said, I mean, I, I personally like it that we've rolled out teams. I, I just have it open, instead of sitting through and waiting for a call or an email to go through. Department heads just text me and hey, hey Steve, I have this quick question. I get it, I reply, okay, we move on. It's just a lot more efficient than waiting for an email to go through. We can't use it with counselors because of right to know law, but we can do it for department heads. But it's also with that too, we've also set it up for projects. So every project now has a team and we can communicate back and forth and nobody's, it, it's starting to cut my emails down. I'm, I'm getting a lot more spam emails to buy COVID nineteen response stuff, but the employee ones are actually dropping because you don't need an email if you only have a quick question. So I think that's, that's good.
Again, I'm not seeing other hands, so I do have a couple other questions. In the reports, one of the comments was about putting the bathrooms in the fire station. So that's something that's going to be moving forward?
We're getting the price to do so. We're going to look if it's possible to use GoForMoney to do it.
Awesome.
But if not, we're going to try to get the prices, you know, to make sure we're allowed to do that.
That's great. Counselor Dumont.
Sorry, can you expand on that? Are you referring to the upstairs renovations that they wanted to do or just expanding some portion of the downstairs?
No, it'd be, it would be bathrooms for the upstairs. We, currently, we don't have a decon place inside the building for a fire. They had to use public works during calls during this pandemic. And so we want to, but that opens up to having both departments down if there's any contamination. So we want to make sure we can still separate by having both facilities be able to do that.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
And Counselor Matthews? Nope, okay. I, I do have just two other, a couple other things. Do you, can you get us, not necessarily for tonight, but an update to just the town permit requests and kind of for, for the expanded restaurant use? Just so that we know kind of who's, how many businesses are taking advantage of that and, you know?
Can I think the number I, I received? Probably about half a dozen.
Wow, oh, great.
Not all of them, not all of them went through it, we approved them, but not all of them went through, decide on their end. I gotta say one thing too, and for the department heads and who've been working on this and I'm not going to specifically point out this, the other community in the area, but it was in the paper last night. They're allowing outside dining as of last night. We were allowing outside dining basically right when it started along with a lot of the other communities. So it was being nimble and be able to react and be able to work with the businesses to do so. I think I gotta commend everybody who's, was willing to do that. Both the businesses as well, they were willing to work with us and to do it.
And I think it's fantastic to extend that through the summer season and it just makes sense. Cause I think that, like you said, if businesses, if restaurants are operating at fifty percent capacity, there, that's just not how the business model works, right? So, so anything that we can do to support them, I think is important. So I do have two other quick things. So the, my other question is if you have any updates on the cell tower?
The only thing, I know it's, construction is pretty much done. I just, I don't think, I don't know if it's been turned on.
Okay, so it's closed?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. And then my last question, I didn't see, and I, I actually forgot that Sean would be here. I wasn't really thinking about that, so. But as I'm watching my lawn turn brown and I have a pond and it's slowly draining, or not so slowly at this point, I was curious where we are at with any drought.
I will ask Mr. Greg too.
Our water supply is in great shape. It's, but the problem is, is that we're going to be on the twenty-ninth shutting the Macintosh well down because we're starting the, putting in the treatment. So we'll be on two of our, on the Bennett Sewell wells, which are at all times high for water levels, higher than I've ever seen and I've been here for twenty-five years. So we should be in good shape. Right now, we're in a stage one water.
Which I, I gotta say, I noticed that driving by the other day and I don't, of all my years living on the seacoast, I don't think, and I grew up here, I don't think I've ever seen that number two come off that.
But we will be putting the stage two back on on the twenty, on the twenty-ninth. So because, because the project is a year and a half.
All right, then it's just, it's just me for now. I am not seeing any other hands, so I guess that does it for the report and department reports. So the next item would be committee reports and are there any committee reports? Oh, Counselor Matthews.
Hi, so we had a planning board meeting last week and the two probably important things are that EverSource has contracted Aspen Tree experts for tree pruning and clearing on Bay Road. And that over the next month, the planning board will individually review permitted uses and we'll have a discussion at the next meeting.
Sorry, Counselor Sanders.
The first meeting of the arts and tourism committee will be next Tuesday night at seven o'clock via Zoom. And I've already had our first resignation. One of the, I know, somebody who had signed up said that their schedule no longer allowed them to be part of the committee. So I will forward her email to Wendy and I've already let Wendy know that we need to re-advertise that. And I will be touching base with like the NBA with the caveat that it does have to be a town resident. So if anybody else wants to help spread the news that we now have one opening, but where there are six of us, we certainly have a quorum and we will have our first meeting and at least elect officers and get it off the ground.
That's fantastic, it's exciting to hear. I mean, not fantastic that you have a resignation, but fantastic that it's moving forward. And I, I, I'm not seeing any other hands and so I wonder if this is an appropriate time to talk about the ordinance review subcommittee? And so Counselor Dumont, you have your hand up.
I was going to ask about that, but I wasn't sure if you wanted to wait until new business after we had passed through. I wasn't sure what was best for you.
I mean, I think, Steve, you're, you're muted.
I'm used to that, I used that, it should be under nominations, but I didn't, now I don't see them on the agenda, so. Okay, you could bring that up now.
Okay. So did you, because we had asked at the last meeting for, for people to email you if they were interested and do we want to start by just saying who is interested in the committee?
Yeah, it was yourself, Counsel Dumas and Counsel Matthews. Those are the three I received.
Was there anybody else who wanted to, oh, Counsel Sanders, are you, is that for before? And so I'm not seeing any others, so typically, I can't remember how we proceed. Do we need a motion to approve those three?
You do.
Okay, so if, I, I would accept a motion to approve Counselor Dumont, Counselor Matthews and Counselor Weinstein to form the ordinance review subcommittee? I think that was the, was that the title?
Ordinance Oversight.
Thank you, ordinance oversight subcommittee.
Okay, I will make a motion to
Okay, I will make a motion to approve Counsel Dumas, Counsel Matthews and Counsel Weinstein to the. Ordinance Oversight Committee.
I will second that.
Seeing no hands, if you could call the roll.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Um, so then the next item would be Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash thirty four. Which is the uh water and sewer rate increases for twenty 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 one, um, and I would. Uh, accept a motion to approve that.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash. Thirty four, water and sewer rate increases twenty 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 one.
I will second. And ask Mr. Gray to.
Well, start with the sewer. Um, back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, when we started the um. Construction of the wastewater treatment facility and started planning for it, um, it was selected that um. We try and do level increases to have. The least impact on sewer users. And so at that point in time, I created a rate model to um. To try and raise rates evenly over time and um so the account would grow. And once the facility would um was built, we deficit spend until revenues met expenses. Um, so and I believe in your um paperwork, um, there's a sewer rate chart. Um, that shows the fiscal year and it shows what the projected increases are. And then it shows the uh projected um. What the rate would be and then it has what the actual rates were. We're pretty much right on course with that. Um, and I'm recommending um a sixty cent increase this year. And then sixty cents for the next following three years. And it puts us pretty much right where I thought we were gonna be, um, where revenues would meet expenses. Um, and then I also included in uh what a single family home uh water consumption is for a sewer user. And that's thirty four thousand five hundred gallons uh a year. So the uh increase at the new rate of twelve dollars per per seven hundred and fifty gallons. Is uh twenty seven dollars and sixty cents a year for that amount of water. And then um the overall cost for a sewer user that uses thirty four thousand five hundred gallons. Is five hundred ninety two dollars a year, which breaks down to a hundred and forty eight dollars a quarter. Included in your package, I also included that um what area, um, what other areas. Um, towns and cities were paying for thirty four thousand five hundred gallons. And it shows that Newmarket's right in the middle. Um, at five ninety two with Portsmouth at seven oh two and Exeter above us at six oh three. Um, it's important to note that. I'm using the rate that we're going to be at in twenty twenty. All these other towns and cities, I believe, are raising their rates at this point in time. I've compared them to what I had, which was last year's rates. Um, and then I show what the um. What it will look like in the next four years. Um, so that's for the sewer, if anybody has any questions. Not seeing any, um, the water rates, um, you can see what the past has happened with the water rates. Um, they really haven't changed from two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen. And then we started to had to do some increases because of um increased costs to the water system. And now that the town has passed that they want to do these water infrastructure projects, which take care of water quality issues. And takes care of age, some aging infrastructure. We're looking at fifty cent raises for the next uh four years. Well, it'd be one this fifty cents issue and then three years following after. Um, the average water user uses thirty six thousand gallons of water a year. Um, you could see that twen- the uh increase of fifty cents is makes it twenty four dollars a year for the average water user. And the average water user uh for that thirty six thousand gallons is three hundred and sixteen dollars for the year or seventy nine dollars for the quarter. You look at New Market and how we compare to those other towns again in cities, New Market is in the middle of the pack. So and then I have on the last column, last block, you can see what the impact of the rates are and what the cost per gallon is. So I recommend that we um we proceed with these um rate increases. And again, at the end of these rate increases, as I haven't projected. That's when the revenues looks like they'll meet the expenses for the two departments.
Great, thank you. Um, Counsel Matthews had a question.
Yes.
Hey Sean, hey, how do you calculate the average sewer? Gallons of water for a for a single family home?
So I take out, um, I look, I take a year's worth of data of what everybody's bills are and I look at what a single family home is. Um, because that's what the state looks at. So a single family home is approximately around fifteen hundred single family homes in Newmarket. Um, and I just compile all there and take what the average water user is. Um, what is not included in this is um is uh multi-units or apartments. Um, we're just looking at single family houses. Looking at the. Apartments, they use a lot less water, so they use about twenty seven thousand gallons on average a year. So that's how, that's how it's looked at.
Sorry, I guess I should clarify. So on this, there's a, there's a meter on everyone's home for sewer, so you know how many, how much sewer each house has or?
It's based on their water consumption. And the reason why the numbers are different between the water and the sewer is because. You have people out there that just have water. And you have people that have water and sewer, and then you also have people that just have sewer. But we meter the water consumption that goes into their house and that's what's based on what goes in is what comes out.
Okay.
Uh, I am not seeing any other hands. So I. Before we call the roll, I just wanted to say that, as always, I'm really appreciative of. You know, the thoughtfulness that has gone into that your water plan over the years and so um. I I appreciate that. I know that it's. Water, water isn't cheap. And but you do a really good job uh of, I I think, doing your best to make sure that. There's a good product for the community and it's a good service for the community at as reasonable a cost as as possible, so. Um, so I appreciate your work in that, Sean.
Thank you.
Um, I'm not seeing any other hands, so if you could call the roll.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Get back to. Okay, so the next item that we have is Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash thirty three. Construction services for the McIntosh and Tucker well treatment project, and I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash thirty three. Construction services for McIntosh and Tucker well treatment project.
I will la second. Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Greg to.
Okay, um, we've actually entered into a couple meetings ago, uh, entered into an agreement with Kinsman to construct the um. Treatment for the uh water to be treated from the McIntosh and Tucker wells. Um, and it's to meet the new five uh parts per billion uh standard for arsenic. And it'll also remove manganese, uh, which will bring us in compliance, which is required by July of twenty twenty one. Um, it is a very big project. This is a year-long project. Wright Pierce uh was selected uh back along through a qualifications-based requirement procurement process. Um, they have performed, performed the design. Um, they have given us an estimate um to do construction services and administration. Um, it is very in line with past projects and things that we've done. It is a long project. This is. Expected to start, actually, this project's gonna start basically the first of July. And some um substantial completion will not probably be reached until December of uh twenty twenty one. Um, with the overall project being probably done. Buttoned up all the items in the spring of um twenty twenty two. So it's a long project, is it's a very technical project and I'm recommending that we um. Move ahead with Wright, Wright Pierce to perform the uh construction administration and oversight services.
Um, Counsel Matthews.
I'm gonna answer a question. Um, so in, I guess this is regarding the agreement, um, but in Wright Pierce's letter to the town. Um, they had just two sentences, quote, uh, this is in regards to Kinsman, uh, quote, however, their management team may be difficult to work with at times. And that they have had uh past problems maintaining schedule. We encourage the town to retain full-time construction inspection services to reduce the potential for issues in scope and schedule changes, end quote. So just with that, with Kinsman, um, were you all able to retain those inspection services?
This, this is the expense, this is the services right here.
Okay.
What we're doing.
Okay.
Sorry, uh, I'm not seeing any other uh hands, so if you go ahead and call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont. Counsel Sanders after.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Great. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Um, let's see. So next up, we have um resolutions in the first reading. Uh, we have one resolution tonight.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yeah.
May I recommend that you read it title only due to the length? Because it has every street and town in it.
Yeah, I thought maybe I could read just those first two sentences, if that's okay.
Yep.
Okay, so this is Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash thirty five. And it's the establishment of voting districts for the twenty twenty state primary and general elections. Whereas due to the COVID nineteen worldwide pandemic, it is recommended that citizens practice social distancing. And whereas the town moderator, town clerk and town council. Feel that in order to achieve social distancing, it is beneficial for the town to create two voting districts or wards. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that pursuant to RSA. Six fifty eight colon ten, two voting districts will be created called wards. And they would be divided as follows, and so those are listed. Um, and like the town manager said, it is. Every street in in Newmarket is listed, and so I highly encourage people to look at those. Uh, and then I also want to just read the end of this resolution and that's that Ward one shall serve as the central polling place. And that Ward one will vote at the town hall for the state primary election. And the Newmarket Junior Senior High School for the general election. And that Ward two will vote at the Recreation Center of Terrace Drive for the state primary election. And the Newmarket Elementary School for the general election, and these districts will sunset after the twenty twenty general election. First reading, June seventeenth. Twenty twenty. So. And I'm assuming that there will be a lot of conversation about that when we have our second reading and um. And will the town moderator be able to attend our meeting?
Yeah, I'm I'm inviting the moderator and the clerk.
Perfect. Um, so next on the agenda is um any correspondence to the town council?
There was none.
Um, and then. Any closing comments by um town councillors? I um I'm not seeing any hands. I do want to comment. Uh, I forgot to mention this earlier with, I don't know if it under committee reports, but. Um, I did have a conversation with the school board chair. Um, so we are in the process of um coming up with a date for a joint. School board and town council meeting. Um, it will, you know, we're what we're looking at right now is sometime in August. Uh, which is traditionally when we've tried to have that meeting in the past. Um, so I mean, that obviously depends on a lot of people's schedules and so we'll see kind of what happens, but it's a. In a lot of ways, it's a really great time for us to meet because it'll be prior to the reopening of schools. Uh, it'll be prior to the elections and so we will have a lot to discuss as these, you know, two boards, so. Along with that, if there are specific topics um that you would want. To explore bringing up, you know, they may or may not be um. I will just, you know, the the, the way the process works is that the um, the two chairs of uh the boards. Kind of get together and kind of decide what the topic should be, and so time permitting, we may not be able to get to everything that people want to discuss. But if you have um topics to discuss, uh, please let me know, uh, probably sooner rather than later. Because um we're gonna be meeting the beginning of July to to start to iron out some of these things. Um, so that's all I had. Um, and so I'm not seeing any other hands, so um. Seeing nothing else with that, we are adjourned.